Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday, December 10th Common Council Meeting. Seeing everybody has checked in, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C is a public hearing in the matter of state and federal aid for the improvements at Marshfield Municipal Airport, Roy Schreary Field. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'll open up the floor to members of the public to wish to address the council regarding this matter. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Second call, anyone from the public wish to address the council? Final call. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and we'll go on to item D, public comments. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council from the podium for stating their name and address. Council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Seeing no one, we will go on to item E. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 26th meeting? Motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mrs. Sparrows. Seeing no discussion, please vote. The motion carries 10-0. Staff updates. Introduction of new employee, James Burton, civil engineer, introduced by Tom Turchi, city engineer.
All right, I'd like to introduce our newest civil engineer in our office. James began employment with our office on October 21st. He's a graduate of Brookfield Central High School and is a Packer fan, which is required. He also graduated from the University of Wisconsin-Platteville, where he holds a bachelor's science degree in environmental engineering. And he's been previously employed by, as a stormwater engineer for the city of Oshkosh, and also worked for Brothman Associates of Portage, Wisconsin. I'd like to have everyone give a warm welcome to James.
Thank you very much. Any other, Steve?
Yes, just one quick one. At a meeting last month, council member Bargander brought up the issue of, could we extend the city email accounts to members of our advisory boards, committees, and commissions? And I just wanted to know that that hasn't been lost. We have been talking at staff level, I've got a feeler out, if you will, to some of my peers in other cities asking about, have they done that? What are the logistics involved? So I just mentioned it to you to let you know it's out there. We will get back to this body when we have something here.
Thank you. Item G, mayor's comments. Louis Colko, the wastewater, December 15th, 2014, five years of service. We certainly do appreciate that. Two quick comments. I'd like to congratulate the, our Marshfield Police Department and the school district for the issue that they had at the high school that appears to be resolved. I thought they did so in a very respectful manner, and congratulations to all involved. The other thing is, Dan, we had a great thing going on. The city was given a great award by the Wisconsin Asphalt Pavement Association. Our 2019 Local Government Asphalt Award for Advanced Innovations in Asphalt Pavement. And this was given to the city, and it's really quite a great award and recognition. So Dan, if you would just give us just a brief update on what it is and what it was.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the award given by the Wisconsin Asphalt Pavers Association was their innovation award, and it was for our use of fibers in asphalt mix. You may have heard of concrete mixes having fibers in them to reinforcement. Well, asphalt mixes also have that opportunity to use fibers within the mix. It's a process the city's been using for 30 years or more, and we've been, over the years, working with our local representatives from the Pavers Association on tweaking the mix and adjusting how we do things and modifying it. And when the mayor called last week to congratulate me on this award for the city, I downplayed it a little bit because it's just, think of it as, hey, this is our job. This is what we do. We try to manage our resources wisely. We try to see ways to extend the lives of our infrastructure and reduce maintenance costs. And so we've been doing this a long time, so didn't see it as a big deal. But talking to the mayor and realizing that, yes, it is a big deal for us to be recognized for this. A lot of communities are not doing as much as we are, I think, in the way of innovating and trying new asphalt mixes and so forth. And while I still believe that it's our job to be doing these kinds of things and looking for innovation and other opportunities, it's nice to be recognized for that. So I want, thank you for that opportunity. And I want to recognize some of our behind-the-scenes staff you don't see here at meetings, who are probably more involved in these kind of day-to-day things than I am. And that is, in our engineering department, we have Tim Cassidy and Josh Moritz, and of course, Tom Turchi leads that group up. And then over at the street department, we have Kurt Hornbach and Chris Hawley and Dean Schiller. And those guys are equally involved in figuring out how we're going to improve our techniques and our systems and so forth. So awards like this are not earned individually. These are team efforts. And I just want you to know you have a great team working for you on these. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Award-winning roads.
Yeah, nice.
Here in Marshfield.
That's a nice ring to it.
All right, item H, council comments. Comments from the council. All right, seeing none, we'll go on to item I. Any reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Seeing none, we'll go on to item J, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to receive and place on file, approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Fire, a second by Mr. Buttke. Mr. Handler? Mr. Whitson?
Thank you. I would like to remove the item number one under Board of Public Works, section K there. The parking traffic changed east Second Street by Second Street Community Center.
All right, anything further? Seeing nothing further than we will pull that, please vote. Motion carries 10 to 0. All right, Mr. Whitson, would you like to start off with the parking traffic change on East Second Street?
Thank you. This has been a hot topic for a couple of months now. Prior to the experimental one-way with angle parking trial period, which I believe went from September 16th to November 1st, there was a lot of discussion about this. And I think I'd like to ask one quick question of our, probably of Dan. That particular stretch of road in front of the community center, I believe, was fairly recently chip-sealed? And I'm just wondering what the current state of that road is and what the life expectancy of that road is, as it is now, if nothing else were to be debated at this point?
Yes, there was a recent chip seal on the road. I believe it was reconstructed within the last seven to eight years. Time goes by, maybe as much as 10 years, but no longer than 10 years ago, that street.
And how long then would you expect that road with the chip seal and whatnot, and the continued maintenance of that road? How long do you expect that road to last, if nothing else were to happen like that?
Well, if you continue maintenance on it, we expect asphalt pavement, urban gutter, 30, 35, 40 years. We've had some reach 40 years.
So if we're to say it's 10 years old, we expect another 20 to 30 years of life out of that strip of road?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. For those of you that haven't necessarily been tuning in, I know the Board of Public Works is sick of seeing you show up at their meetings. But it's been a discussion at the Board of Public Works meetings. Three weeks ago, it was brought up the results of the trial period, along with the survey results, which I know everybody had access to. It was a part of the agenda for that particular meeting. And as you go through the questions, it's, you know, obviously, there's a desire for a one-way street. What I find interesting, though, is that this particular survey that was taken was taken in such a way that only people going to the community center and library who knew about the survey were allowed to participate. Now, the argument I heard was it's because those are the people that stand to receive the most benefit from that, which, okay, I understand that argument. But that stretch of road is used by far more than just people that are going to the community center. It's used by residents. It's used by people who travel through that neighborhood. And none of those people who were surveyed are given an opportunity to express their opinions. And even though it targeted the people who most benefit from this experiment, less than two-thirds were in favor. And yes, it is mathematically less than two-thirds. So less than two-thirds were in favor. And if you look through the comments, and there were lots of comments, I have them all right here, lots of comments, there were approximately 97 comments. More comments were negative about the one-way than were positive. Now, I tend to not necessarily put a lot of stock into online comments, because I know that it's somewhat of a small subset of people. But because it does expand an already small subset of people in a survey here, I am going to mention the fact that if you go online and look at any discussion that takes place about this particular street, it is overwhelmingly against turning it to a one-way. Now, again, a little bit of history here. We survey people in a community center, most benefit, less than two-thirds. It's sort of like going into a tobacco outlet store and asking the customers, should we have a smoking ban? Obviously, customers who utilize tobacco probably would not want a smoking ban. Rather than asking the people who work there, that's a small subset. When this was first put in as an experiment, we were told, we really, really need to do this. We really need a one-way street. We really need to increase parking. Parking is a primary thing. We've got to have more spaces. We can get seven more spaces if we do a one-way. Well, it ended up being six more spaces, because originally it was nine spaces on the south side, and then it was 15 with the angle, so that's six spaces gained. And after that experiment was done, and I looked through a lot of the comments here, I suggested perhaps, with the street being wide enough for two-way traffic and parallel on both sides, that that might be a cheaper, better alternative, which would also yield more spaces. So we're now looking at four options that were provided the previous Board of Public Works meeting, which was last week. And the fourth option is with a parallel parking on both sides. And as the, the information that was provided in that agenda states, we go with a two-way with parallel on both sides, 19 spaces. So we go from nine spaces currently there on the south side to an experiment with 15 spaces of angle to now 19 possible spaces without going to a one-way but maintaining the two-way street. So again, I'm finding that it's a little bit frustrating, and I think some of the comments that were provided through the survey also reflect a little bit of that frustration. For example, one person here wrote, "It seems you have already made up your mind and decked with the public." So the fact that first we need to have a one-way because we need to have more spaces, but now we don't want a one-way, or we do want a one-way, not because it's more spaces, because actually it's more spaces with a two-way, but because it's more angle spaces right in front of the door, it just seems as though, I feel a little bit manipulated, like we've got to get this one-way regardless. We're going to make the argument work for us. So I'm a little bit bothered by that. I'm also bothered by the fact that we look at these types of projects without necessarily thinking about the whole city. And I personally represent about 2,000 people. Each of us represent about 2,000 people. I have yet to have anybody call me and say, please put in a one-way with angle parking. But I have had lots of people call me and say, please don't do this. Three and a half to four years ago, this body, before I joined this body, this body put out a street referendum, asking the taxpayers for more money for street work. That referendum failed. A lot of people were questioning, why would that fail? And a lot of people thought, well, it was lack of information. We didn't get enough information out to the public. And perhaps to some, that was the case. But I happen to know a lot of people that voted against it, because at that moment, we were in the process of tearing up a brand-new, redone West Second Street to make it a one-way. That's a big concern. We're now looking at this street, which has another 20 to 30 years' life expectancy, to rip it up, to put in a one-way. Just to back up again on the parking spaces. parking spaces, the gained parking spaces, you can actually probably reduce slightly in the wintertime because of the bump outs and the difficulty of plowing. Nothing against our plowing crews. I know they do a great job. But I also know that it's very difficult to plow around those bump outs. Matter of fact, this past weekend, I parked on Second Street west of Central, and I could not park in the first space because half the space is covered by a ridge of snow and ice that the plow left behind because they can't tuck in tight enough. I parked out front here. My car is halfway into a snowbank, even though I'm in a parking space because the plow can't dig it in deep enough. So we're going to lose spaces if we do bump outs. We're going to waste taxpayer money if we do this reconstruction. And the concern that I've heard is that we need to get this done right away. We need to get it done. Even though it's not right now in the CIP, we need to get this done right away. Maybe we can push it through next year by making a different project go away. And so I look at the projects and I look at some of the streets, you know, west, we've got West Seventeenth, sorry, East, East Seventeenth Street that we're going to be reconstructing. North Cedar over toward the mall, that's in pretty rough shape. South Chestnut over behind Bultis, that's in pretty rough shape. Are those going to get bumped out further because we have to reconstruct a street that has another life expectancy of 20 to 30 years? It just doesn't seem like fiscal responsibility. One of the comments that was just made, we manage our resources wisely. We need to make sure we're doing that. The other comment I want to make, last council meeting, we as a body, and I know not everybody was in agreement to it, but we as a body approved the largest tax hike in probably decades. And now what we're asking the taxpayers is trust us. We realize it was a big tax break, we're, tax hike. We're really, really sorry about the tax hike, but trust us. We're going to, we're going to do better. And now we're saying, oh, but we're going to rip up a perfectly good street to put in angle parking. This is not a wise choice. If in 20 to 30 years, we're looking at a reconstruction, we're looking at a redesign, let's talk about things. But right now, at this point, with so many street projects that need to be done, with a, a large tax increase, we need to make sure that we're fiscally responsible and we need to be frugal with the resources we have. And this is not a wise choice. I really want to see this stay as a two-way with parking on both sides. I know one of the arguments I'm going to hear is that it's safer to have angle parking. Well, a couple of the comments that came through here, again, comments from the survey. Comment number nine, I've almost been hit twice from people backing out, not being able to see. The, the way it is now is an accident waiting to happen. Comment number 27, temporary parking on East Second is rather dangerous when you back out to leave. You can't see approaching cars. Comment after comment, it's not a safe alternative. At this point, I guess I would move to leave two-way parking or two-way traffic and put angle, put parallel parking on both sides.
Mr. Spiros.
So I have a couple of questions. I wasn't at the Board of Public Works meeting. And to be honest with you, I have not had an opportunity to view the video. So if I could get one of the guys to come up and kind of address some of the things that Tom has said. I mean, as far as, I mean, you, you did comment a lot on surveys. And, and I mean, in the past, you've never given any credence to any surveys. When we discussed the gun issue, you really didn't have any respect for those surveys either. So I'm not sure why you're putting so much weight on this. I will say that this is where I go to vote. This is my voting place. And after the last election, I received several phone calls from elderly people. And I believe I relayed that to you all about the parking. And they wanted to be able to park in front of the senior center themselves and not struggle to find parking places further out in the parking lot or on other streets. The other thing that I've heard in opposition, and this has mostly come from the gentleman in District Six, is that, you know, people have to drive an extra block around that one. For me personally, that holds no water because that's an extra 15 or 20 seconds added on, you know, to your, to your drive. So I don't think that that should hold any, any credence at all. And the last thing is, one of the things that we've talked about is respecting the committee's decision. So I kind of would like to know what the vote was on that from the Board of Public Works.
I don't have those minutes in front of me, but I believe it was a four to one vote.
It was, it was four to one in favor of the one way. Option three, which was angle parking on the north side and no parking on the
So in follow-up, just, he talks about ripping up the, the, the one-way, or ripping up the street to create a one-way. So what is the plan there?
It wouldn't have to reconstruct the street. The bump outs would be added at each end of the block, but that impact would be pretty limited. Majority of the street stays in place. The curb width that's out there today is sufficient for the angle parking if there's a one-way.
So in follow-up, is there a cost that you have associated with adding the bump outs?
Yes. The, the information in the board packet was a $34,000 estimate to add the angle park. That's by, for the creation of the bump out.
And would you, where would you be getting the $34,000? Would you be cutting out another street project as insinuated?
Well, the discussion was that we don't have money in the 2020 budget for that. So we'd go into the CIP process for prioritization as a 2021 project, unless there's some money that could be found in 2020. We haven't started looking for that money, knowing that this discussion was continuing tonight. So at this point, we don't have money in 2020. It would be 2021 earliest, unless there's something else that would change in the 2020 budget.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but $34,000 would not, would not do a full street anyway, correct? Though if he was, you know, if we were referring to cutting another project, you're not going to get that project done for $34,000 anyway?
No, no.
Thank you.
I would just like, like to add two minutes, two comments to Tom, what you had to say, which is very well researched and everything. And I certainly appreciate your opinion. I've not received phone calls. I've actually met with the seniors. The seniors there with Dan and Tom and Justin Casperson, we've had a meeting with them on what they want, on, on how we're going to get this community center, how we're going to get more seniors to events. Are we going to listen to our seniors? Or are we just going to, is that where we're at? And the other thing, you can have parking on the other side. And with, with the ice as it is, a senior going from the other side across that street, they can't get across necessarily as fast. I just, I, I think we have to do what's right for the seniors. This is, it's a senior center. The other thing is, I, I just take exception with, Tom, is the fact of the, the inference to the tax hike. We are all brutally aware of why we had to have, you're right, one of the largest tax increases over time. And it's simply because, it wasn't because we're out there overspending or looking and doing frivolous projects. It's because the oversight on what was taking place wasn't being done right. And there was a $1.9 million hole. So that's a much different picture there than us just going out and frivolously doing it. I just hope we'll side for the seniors. Hope that's where we're at. Mr. McSwain?
Yeah, I would, I would have to say that your viewpoint is the one that's shared by other people in my, my district. I have, I think, maybe a larger percentage possibly of, of elderly in my district than, than most, if not any. And I receive very strong feedback in favor of the solution of, of number three, having the one-way and, and not having the, the parking on the other side. But it was, I would say, not only the amount, but the enthusiasm for the change, how, how that was beneficial. And the real heavy concern that it would not be put in, that there'd be the, the parking on the other side, is a safety concern was, was one of the things that they, that they kept on mentioning. And I just, I think that there's times when maybe a lot of the public might be inconvenienced, but a lot of other people might be greatly inconvenienced if, if you didn't do it. And I think this is a case of that, that we, let's go with the opinion that was, was, was passed by the, the board, that they have the one-way with the angled parking. Again, I, I got a lot of feedback from it. And, and what I noted in particular was enthusiasm, the really, boy, this was something that was done good for what was done. And the real concern, and, and I'm, I don't even think fear would be too strong a word, that it might be changed otherwise. So I'd be very much in favor of keeping the option three with the one-way street and the angle parking on one side.
Thank you, Mr. Buttke.
Yeah, I'm the alderman in that district, and I have received zero calls of any complaints with the angle parking there. And people in my district, I, I know not to contest what you said, Mr. McSwain, but I know Mr. Fire and I have a lot of elderly in our areas still. But when we first started that survey, I think it was Mike that said, we don't want people to put on their, that they're just against a one-way street as the option. Because people, some people don't like change. And some of that on that survey, especially the written comments, were, were talking about one-way streets. They didn't want a one-way street. They didn't talk about the safety. And, and Mayor, you said it right. This is about safety. You do not want elderly with walkers, canes, going across the street, parking on both sides and having to walk through traffic. You're asking for big-time trouble. I, you know, the one-way street isn't really the, the main thing here, but it is with the best option. What will work best for the citizens and the elderly is the one-way street and angle parking on that side right by the community center. They do not have to walk across the street. So the vote was four to one, and I think we chose the right thing to do on that. And I think that's what we should stick with.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. I feel I have to explain a few more things here. As was mentioned, I normally don't put a lot of stock into online survey comments. We were provided with survey comments here, and we're basing all of our decisions on these survey comments. This is a very narrow-focused set of, of results. So in order to get a slightly wider set of results or opinions, then I do look at other options. And since no other options were provided other than online comments, in this case, yes, I did have to look at those comments. Comments, you know, no one-way, we don't like one-way. How about these? One-way street making navigating around library too difficult. Like two-way traffic better, especially coming off Peach. One-way street wastes fuel and uses, use of the book drop-off as you have to go two blocks out of the way back and forth. Coming here today, there was more than half the lot in the front empty and two cars in the back lot. I think that, I don't think that warrants cutting off a way from Peach. This is interesting. You've already messed up Second Street. How much more are you going to mess up? What a waste of money. Additional comments about safety, a man almost ran into me going the wrong way. And the only reason we didn't, he didn't was because no one was parked. Other safety concern, just a matter of time before someone gets hit backing out of angled parking with very limited sight. In terms of the CIP, we already have CIP planned out for a number of years. So yes, there will have to be an adjustment to some type of project. This is a community center, not a senior center, though the seniors use it. It is still a community center. Yes, the tax hike has nothing to do with this. Public perception is everything. And again, public perception, when that request for a referendum came out, public perception was that we were wasting money by ripping up West Second Street. There was a lot of discussion two years ago about severance not being done. Would severance have been done sooner if we hadn't ripped up West Second Street? Don't know. Public perception is everything. The thing that concerns me is we not, have not even tried two-way traffic with parallel on both sides. And I also understand that there is a concern with snowbanks and how do you get out of cars? And that's easily handled. Central Avenue has parallel parking and people can get out no problem. Yes, you have to clear the terrace, but it can be done. We haven't even tried it. We haven't even given every option a chance. Instead, we've just got our minds made up. First, we're told, we got to maximize parking. Then we're told, no, we're not going to maximize parking. We're going to reduce our parking slightly just so that we can have those angled spots. Let's, let's figure it out, but let's give it a try before we start ripping up roads and putting in things that we're going to be stuck with, as was mentioned at the Board of Public Works meeting, for the next 50 years. Let's make sure that we've tried every option available before we just jump into this.
Thank you, Mr. Jockick.
All right. I just want to clarify one thing for all the person Spiros. We talked about timing this to 2021, but I think we talked about, we don't know if this is going to be done, but this may be part of the motion is because it's relatively easy to line Second Street and not do the bump outs, those are the expense, is next year, this would, this would occur next year. We would use temporary bump outs or barrels or some, some form of a barrier. So yeah, this, this may be occurring next year. That was part of the motion. So I think it's a good idea to get the parking on the, on the one side so you don't have to cross two lanes of traffic going into. You're seeing, at events, you're going to see higher traffic counts there. You're going to see higher traffic. And that just makes it a little more dangerous to, to cross the street at that point. It will be narrower than it is now. So that, you know, someone getting out of their car on the south side will have to look both ways. It's a safety issue. We're not gaining the amount of spaces necessarily, but we are improving that and, and putting the parking where it should be on the north side. As far as the survey, I, at what point do we survey? And at what point do you say, okay, 51%? Oh, it has to be 70%, it has to be 80%? We're charged with making decisions. That is our responsibility. I personally, like Tom, have received no phone calls on this, no emails on this. No one is, has contacted me either way. Not, I think everyone on this side is, if they received any phone calls, are positive. But I don't know what a survey and what that expense would be. And quite frankly, it is the people that use that area, that facility are the ones who are most appropriate to see what would be effective for them. The fact that Tom got no phone calls from many citizens on Second Street beyond to the east is striking because if they were inconvenienced, they're the ones that we, we alluded in our discussion, maybe the most impacted. They didn't seem concerned enough to call the city or call their alderperson. So we're charged with making these decisions. We're talking $30,000. And yes, I understand it can be seen as a great deal of money, but there is gain to that. And then my question would be, we need to survey everything. I mean, we, we increased the price of the pool $500,000 last meeting. I didn't hear anyone say, well, maybe we ought to check and do a survey on that. At some point, we need to make the decision. That's our responsibility. That's what we're doing here.
Thank you, Mr. Fire.
When I came tonight, I thought I wasn't going to see anything. But over half of my constituents in my district are elderly. And they, I would say that I have about 45 to 50 of them that do come to the senior center. And I can also tell you that the seniors cannot parallel park. They'll tell you that. They can't, they can't see around to parallel park. So if they can't drive straight in, they're not going to park on that street. So they aren't going to get in between cars. So, and I, I happen to be the, the president of the senior center. And the last two meetings I had, and the last two bingles I went to, they asked me when it was going to come back. And I said, I'm hoping that we would get it done this evening so we could get it for the spring. So they are, they were unhappy that we removed it when, when November came along. So let's, you know, and we talk about taxpayers, and I, I was talk about taxpayers. And I was gonna say this at the Board of Public Works, and people say, we represent taxpayers. Well, over half of the people that I I represent were paying taxes long before we were born. So I think that maybe that's one thing to look. They've been paying a lot of tax all these years. And I guess we can give them a parking space that they need. So I think we should just vote this and get on with it.
All right, seeing uh no discussion, then there is a motion and a second to uh the two-way traffic with parking on both sides of the street. That is the motion. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion fails seven to zero?
Seven to three.
I'm sorry, seven to three? So now do we go to the original motion there?
Make the motion.
Okay. So is there a motion um to recommend approval of option number three pertaining to parking on a one-way street on East Second Street from Maple to Cedar and to implement as soon as possible in 2020 if funding can be allocated? A motion by Mrs. Spieros, a second by Mr. Butke. Any discussion?
The way you phrase that uh indicates that if money can be found, it will be done next year. We will be lining, re-lining that and creating a one-way, even though we will not be creating the bump outs, permanent bump bump outs for next year. That was the original motion in the Board of Public Works. I just wanna make sure that that was.
There is a note, I will I will read that. So there's a note below that to option three includes one-way eastbound traffic. Um no parking on the s- on the south. If funding is not available in 2020, for Permanent Improvement Board, census was to reimplement the temporary angle parking angle solution that was in place in fall of 2019. Is that correct? So there is a motion, a second to that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Now, motion carries seven to three. Uh item L, request to approve revised budget resolution number 07-2019, revising certain account numbers presented by Ron Amon, Finance Director.
Thank you. Um this budget revised budget resolution is just correction of an error. Uh as part of our year-end procedures, we go back through and look at all the budget resolutions. And we found on this one, we had used some actual um account numbers instead of budgetary account numbers. Um so we just want to correct and formalize that correct numbers. There's no change into what the funds were intended to be used for uh for those kind of things. It's just a clerical error on our part.
Uh thank you. So is there a motion to approve the revised budget resolution number seven dash 2019, a motion by Mr. Henler, or a second by Mrs. Spieros? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries ten to zero.
Thank you.
Item M, request to approve the list of 2020, 2021 election inspectors presented by Deb Hall, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet is a list of election inspectors for the 2020 and 2021 election cycle. Parties have until November 30th to submit lists to the city of Marshfield. We did receive a list from the Democratic Party. Therefore, on the list, you will see those names listed under there. All other election inspectors are listed as nonpartisan, and I would recommend approval.
Think is there a motion to approve the list of election inspectors? Motion by Mrs. Spieros, second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Uh motion carries nine to one. A request to approve resolution 2019-50, requesting state aid for airport improvements, uh presented by Jeff Guyer, Airport Manager.
Good evening. First of all, I want to apologize to everyone for arriving late. Had an aircraft come in tonight that needed refueling and to be put in the hangar. Uh 2019-50 is a resolution petitioning the Wisconsin Bureau of Varinautics for federal and state aid on airport improvement projects. The list of projects on the petition are projects that are wish list items that if the city would decide that, yes, we want to do them, the Bureau will act on our behalf with the Federal Aviation Administration and work with them to get federal funds. The benefit of that is whenever we have a federal-funded project at the airport, being a transportation entity, the project itself is usually paid 10% by the city, or I'm sorry, 5% by the city, another 5% by the state of Wisconsin, and 90% of it is paid by the federal government. Uh if we do a state project, which this petition also covers, the state would pay 80% of it and the city would pay 20%. So by doing this petition, it's a huge benefit to try to get federal and state funds.
All right. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 2019-50, motion by Mr. Butke, second by Mr. Jockick? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries ten to zero.
Thank you.
Item O, request for extension of time to complete exterior site improvements required under an existing development agreement with Dental Crafters, uh presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Um we've been working with Dental Crafters for about a year and a half now on their project. And uh they signed a development agreement back in September of 2018 uh to do about a 6,500 square foot addition for dental laboratory and light manufacturing of dental um equipment. Um so they got the project essentially done. The building was built out. Um they got their certificate of occupancy in November. As we discussed last month about another project, uh inclement weather came and hit us pretty hard. And the only thing that they really have left to do is to resaw uh the area that they dug up for the construction, which is uh basically their backyard and some of the front area along the street. Um so really, they're looking for uh an extension for the development agreement that would allow them to collect their final payment. Um the extension would go through July 1st. Um this these these types of situations are kind of giving us a kind of a revisit of looking at how we kind of um schedule our incentive payments. The real key is to having the building done by the end of the year. That's really what what the tax value is. These types of landscaping, we know landscaping's probably not gonna get done late fall, um just because of the weather that we seem to hit. So we probably would be looking to schedule future development agreements that allow the landscaping and and maybe some of the minor site improvements to be done at a later time. But uh that's for another day. So anyways, this is part of a TID 5, and this is part of the Business um Incentive Fund or Business Improvement Fund that was created by uh TID 5 before it closed, or the expenditure period closed. So Wood County holds this fund in escrow, and uh so they have to sign off on this. They've been supportive of of this uh extension as well. So uh basically, we'd be requesting to um extend the development agreement to allow for them to finish up their their landscaping um by July 1 of 2020.
Thank you. Is there a there is a motion by Mr. Butke and a second by Mrs. Spieros to approve the request of extension? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries ten to zero.
Thank you.
Next item is item P, report on development agreement process. And Steve, I'm gonna, Steve's gonna introduce this.
Yeah, thank you. Uh and you know, out of recent discussions with the mayor, uh came a good idea. We we talked about development agreements. We come out of closed session and we approve them. We talk about this is a method of which we can assist business, commercial, industrial development projects in the business park, the industrial park, other parts across the city. And sometimes people hear this and they kind of wonder what all goes into this. We thought it may be a good time as we wind down the year uh to have a little report, which Josh is gonna do in a minute. What what goes into a development agreement? What kind of things does the city staff work on with the city attorney's office to make sure that we're doing due diligence and and as we help business grow, that we are on the right side of things? So with that in mind, Josh, we'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I really just wanna touch on a couple things in this uh brief report. Um you know, we we really wanna establish, and we've established a template for development agreements, which include different provisions under different circumstances uh to make sure that we include things and things don't get missed. And really, we wanna make sure that the council understands what's included in those items. And if there are deviations from that, that's where staff will highlight those things moving forward. So if there are things, uh we've talked about some development agreements, if they, you know, that there's a minimum assessed value or different different provisions that uh the council is assured that that the city is protected in these agreements. So um obviously, we wanna help the businesses out and and encourage them to grow and and um establish here in the community, but we also wanna make sure the city is protected. So a couple of those things, you know, put together a template to make sure that we're addressing incentive payments and sale of city-owned property. Uh also looking at a template for uh establishing uh infrastructure improvements, because sometimes those are completely separate types of agreements with different provisions. Um providing a list of current LLC members. I know that's that's come up at at recent discussions about um uh for some for some of these agreements. And if applicable, obviously, sometimes they're not with LLC. Um develop uh um including a development and project description. So you're talking about the overall scope of the project, typically like the size of the development, what type of development it is. Um you know, the expected improvement costs, um developer requirements and obligations. So we would establish the minimum assessed value based on uh the X number of years that um they have to they would have to pay, meet the minimum assessed value over X number of years to make sure that we recoup any incentive payment that we're making um based on basically a minimum tax guarantee, a dollar amount. And then um those requirements would also include granting city easements and spelling that out if necessary. So in some cases, um through, we we wanna be able to retain some of the some control over the land or access to the land through easements, making sure that those things are clear in the development agreement. And then as far as undertakings of the city, what we are gonna pay out for incentives, um what the benchmarks would be for what the developer has to meet in order to receive the incentives, uh deadlines, as we've just talked about in the last item. And then if the city has to provide a certified survey map, uh make sure that gets done. Um and then public infrastructure, we'd be establishing responsibilities and costs associated with that. And it would be responsible for those costs if the developer has to reimburse us for um engineering fees or construction management, things like that. Um restrictions on transfer, the project involves the sale of city-owned land. Um sometimes we can put a provision in there that says you can't, the the property can't be transferred to a tax exempt um entity for 10 years or however long um we need to to recoup our investment. Um if necessary, and we've we've had some talk internally, some of these things might be a challenge to incorporate, but like a callback or uh if a sale, if the city sells some land and uh the project doesn't take place over X number of years, did the city get it back uh with uh with a at the sale price or a similar established dollar amount? Otherwise, establishing a right of first refusal um within the agreement. Making sure the project or the development agreement gets recorded with the county, register of deeds, uh establishing defaults and remedies in case or case of default. And then other protections like indemnification and immunity. And then timing, we talked about that with uh uh just in the case of inclement weather, things like that. If uh it's always time is of the essence to get these things done. However, if they don't, having some flexibility to extend agreements to accommodate uh those types of situations and in the rare rarest of situations, hopefully. Um and then, as I talked about, making sure that the council understands what the expectations are. So if there are uh or if there are things taken out of the agreement, why those things were taken out and why they were negotiated out. Um so they the councils, you know, we're we're clear um and transparent about what we're doing with these agreements. Um and to that end, we've developed a checklist, an internal checklist that identifies roles and responsibilities for certain aspects of the development agreement to make sure these things are getting done um at the deadlines or during, you know, before the deadlines uh pass. So when we get this DA um ready to go, we fill out a spreadsheet that is that is included in the in the file. Um it would include dates for approvals, uh budget resolutions, if they're passed or if they're needed, if the project wasn't part of original budget, um completed tasks, and then notes on those tasks. And then they'd be assigned to various staff members. So like for myself, as the Development Services Director, uh making sure the incentive payments are made or the benchmarks are met, uh make sure we have accurate and updated contact information, um the approval dates of all the council actions um throughout the process, uh agreement details, project scope and TIF information. So sometimes uh one project's part of a a TIF project plan, and we wanna make sure that we're keeping up on what other TIF uh activities have gone on related to that project plan. So we're not uh either overspending or, you know, making sure that those um those project plans are being met on those. And so uh Public Works Director, such as easements and public infrastructure improvements, he'd be responsible for overseeing that. And the Finance Director would be looking at the development agreements and sending those to the Joint Review Board. That's a requirement that the that all the taxing entities, if it's part of a TIF district, would have to review. And then uh finding the minimum assessed values on a yearly basis to make sure that those uh values are being met and those taxes are being paid. So those are just a, you know, kind of the the checklist that we're going through now as we go through these development agreements. And then any deadlines, making sure that those are incorporated into our outlook, um whether it's calendar or task list, so we get reminders to make sure that those things are are being followed along. So uh just wanted to kind of walk the councils through that kind of brief report and make sure that they understand that you guys understand that we're following through on these things and we're um working through uh these development agreements and uh following through on the directives that you give us as part of the agreement.
Mr. McSwain.
Yeah, you indicated there towards the end, I think, that there'd be a review put in place that apparently we don't have now about making sure the taxes are paid. This would be a change, is that?
No, I, uh, these aren't necessarily changes. These are just a more organized manner in which we're doing things as far as checklists and things like that. We do go through that and make sure that the uh minimum assessed values are being met for per the development agreement. Just I'm just walking through what our process is overall for these development agreements and and explaining that there's now a checklist that and and roles and responsibilities uh are assigned for these different different projects. But we've been doing those things.
Well, I think we had an issue with taxes. And and the other question is, uh, if there are things that are being done on that property while under the agreement, is there any uh provision where they would have to notify anybody that this is this is taking place, such as possibly tearing down buildings or other such things?
Well, yeah, a- a- any provision would really be included in that checklist. So if there's certain things that, if they do something that's different than the development agreement, that's a little more challenging because we didn't anticipate a house being torn down. Just as if, you know, there there are certain things that you probably wouldn't anticipate in a um in a in a project. You know, you kind of have the intent that a project's gonna go well. But ideally, in this this checklist that we have, we're able to incorporate the different features of the development agreement, the different conditions, the different deadlines. And so those things are, we we kind of have a checks and balances now that they're gonna be met.
Well, this this my my question always is to stop something and then I'm saying that there would that there'd be a provision that they would notify before they would, you know, just some sort of notification to somebody, we're about to engage in this activity on the on the property or that activity and as long as it's under the agreement.
I'll I'll jump in at this point. I mean, certainly, anything, any action that a developer would take that would be counter to an agreement. In other words, it would be something that would create a direct nonconformist with what they signed on to uh would be something that that they shouldn't be doing. And we've become aware of it, we would, you know, deal with it. Uh, you know, and of course, certain things regarding building permits and and in the case of what you're describing, a raising permit. But I guess what Josh is talking about tonight is making sure that the the pieces of the development agreement that call out what's expected of you, what's expected of us are in place and in a way that, you know, we can enforce.
But that that that's what I'm saying, though, is that when that there is there's notification that they're doing, if we put would put that into there before they take action, but.
It sounds like you're getting specifically to that issue that we had in. And so if you think.
It's an example of something.
Sure. But let's use that as an example. So the development agreement required basically that they um improve that home within a certain period of time. So if you would have had a provision that said you have to notify us that you're gonna tear something down or do something in opposition to the development agreement, you're in the same boat because it's a breach that they didn't do what they were supposed to. The same as it would be a breach not to notify you. So we wouldn't be standing in any different position. You'd have a breach either way that you'd have to take action on. I think what Josh has said is that, you know, there's an effort here to sort of create a checklist and to monitor things in terms of timing and reference some calendaring that would be part of these development agreements. And I think that's what improves that situation so that we know, hey, if uh the home is supposed to be built on by September 1st, 2019, and it's not done, and we know that, and a calendar beeps that you gotta check that out, they go there and find out it's not done, you've got a breach of the contract there. There wasn't a question in the um instance that you're talking about that there was a breach. The question was just simply, when do we know about it if you're not specifically monitoring for somebody to do something?
Well, this is what this is what I'm getting at, is being a preventive measure that if they're required to notify when they're engaging in this or that activity, just as some sort of a note, then you would be able to stop something before.
So what I'm getting at is that if you So what I'm getting at is that if you have a requirement that they're supposed to notify you, or you have a requirement that they're supposed to build by a certain date, either one is a breach, so you're not in a different position than what we would have had. If somebody's going to do something bad, you know, then it's on us to probably monitor for that to happen. But you, if we have a provision in the contract that would have said, hey, if you aren't going to do this, or you're going to tear something down, even though the contract says you're supposed to build it, they're in a breach either way, so we don't change the scenario, you don't change your remedies, you're just putting in another provision, and you can say, well, you breached in two ways, but you're, you still have a breach of the contract. So I don't think you gain anything by having that type of requirement.
Well, I always think is possibly gaining two things. One is possibly preventing something, and secondly, it'd be one more hammer you'd have on them.
Thank you. Josh, I agree that the checklist is a great idea for monitoring and double checking to make sure that things are being done properly. My question, I guess, is how many development agreements does the city currently involve?
From a financial incentive component, I think it's just the two that we've talked about in the last couple of weeks. Those are the two active ones that are, that are awaiting payment or final completion. That's it. There's other ones, I think, with, that we're working on as far as whether it's, well, I mean, we have, we have other active ones, I guess, that are ongoing that, when they're making sure that the tax payments are made through TIF districts. So those are always, we're monitoring probably, you know, 10 or so development agreements throughout each year, just to go back and make sure that those minimum assessed values are being met. But active ones, I think it's just mainly those two, but then we're working on others. You know, we've, we've talked about other projects in this body about, that are not complete yet.
Josh, can I ask you, it's very common in a real estate transaction that at the, at a closing, there's maybe somebody comes and gives an adjustment for oping, or utilities got turned off or on. In our templates that we now have, are those very clearly laid out, that when, when we transfer property, these things took place?
No, because that's different than our development agreement. So we, a transfer of property, you know, is not always part of a development agreement. So in that case, no, but we certainly can add something like that.
Can we add that?
Yeah.
And then once it's, once it's added, can you bring this checklist back to the body so that we can get a good look at it? Because the simple things like that are just, it's very nice to see, oh, we have this, turn this off, turn this off, turn this on, or whatever it is.
Yep.
But that way, the, you know, file is complete, if you will. Any other questions for Josh? Nope. All right. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Item Q, adjourned to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin's judge statutes, Chapter 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Possible purchase of property located within TIF District Number 7, their motion to go into closed session. There's a motion by Mrs. Spurles, second by Nick, please vote. And motion carries ten to zero, we're in closed session. We're in closed session.